So, welcome to the Rutland Town Planning Commission. It's Thursday, October 5th of 2023. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
I, from the United States of America, and through the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the livable of liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. So we still have last, perfect with a seven, so everyone can vote here. Um, approval of the agenda.
We should approve. Sorry, goodness.
Session? Yeah, all those in favor, please say hi.
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, and just in case Bill needs us, Sherman is here tonight, Jim, Andy, Jerry, uh, Howard, and Norm, and myself, and we're all voting. Um, we're up to the public comment period, and don't see any public, so we'll go to new business. And, um, a brief overview of Act 47, which was passed this past session, but no one was, it didn't really get much attention until recently, and even now, people don't know what to do with it. There's a lot of stuff in here, if you've taken a look at it. And, um, it's maybe a good thing that our subdivision ordinance is still in draft stage, because there may be some things in here we need to add. Um, even though we don't have zoning, and this is a lot, a lot of this is about density and making room and accommodations, um, for, uh, multi-unit housing. Um, we really don't address that kind of thing in, in our stormwater ordinance. Um, maybe we can add some stuff to our town plan, but we're not going to be doing that for a while. But there's some, um, there's some funky language in here that, um, we need our town attorney to clarify. VLCT, um, and, and I sent out this document from, um, Department of Housing and Community Development. They're all saying, ask your town attorney uh, if you have questions. So, the, the, the funny stuff in here is that, um, the language that says in residential districts served by municipal sewer and water, you have to do this, and you have to do that. It's like two or three, there's at least two shells for, for, um, those kind of residential districts. So of course, we have some of those. We have a lot of those. And whether it just applies to those, or the fact that we have them, that it needs to go in a townwide, um, in our case, storm, uh, subdivision ordinance, I don't know. Um, but one of them is, um, uh, municipalities cannot require more than one parking space per dwelling unit.
Cannot what?
Cannot require more than one parking space per dwelling unit. Um, another one is, uh, municipalities, and this is for those
Wait a minute.
Water and sewer districts, yeah.
I'm sorry. That's surprised, this is supposed to increase multi-unit development. And it says it cannot require more than a per dwelling unit. Okay, so we, a two-family house with four adults can only have two cars.
It, yes.
That's, I don't know. Can only be required to have two cars. They can have six cars.
Right. They can only have two parking places.
Yes.
Or we're only required to have two parking places. Doesn't mean they can't park on the street wherever they want, right?
Yeah.
We can't tell them they need two.
I'm sorry, I just, just jumped out.
Yeah, it, I, I think the, um, the aim there is that don't use up the land on parking. Unless you have to.
You're saying they have to have at least two, in this case? A, a duplex?
Um.
Section one.
Municipalities may require 1.5 spaces for duplexes in multifamily dwellings in areas without sewer and water.
So like if our, if our subdivision ordinance said we need, you need to have two, we can't do that. The state's saying you can't require them to have two.
Right.
Only 1.5 for a duplex or one for a single family. Huh? Do we, do we stipulate that in our ordinance?
No, we don't have, no.
So shouldn't really.
We don't get into this detail in the subdivision ordinance at all. You know, we're, we're
With half a car, it, it becomes a little.
One and a half spaces.
Motorcycle.
Yeah, but it says it can be rounded to the nearest whole number. If existing public parking is not sufficient, rounded to the nearest whole number when calculating the total number of required spaces.
Yeah, and half of that's for, um, areas in a town without, I mean, that don't have the water and sewer. In the first half is for those that do have, to make available municipal water and sewer. So, and then there's another one, um, that also applies to minutes, those with municipal sewer and water. Um, they must allow multi-unit dwellings with three or four units to be a permitted, not conditional use. And that's zoning.
Would you, would you repeat that? I, I didn't understand it. I'm sorry. I understood your words, but I didn't.
Yeah, in areas served by municipal sewer and water, municipalities must allow multi-unit dwellings with three or four, three or four units to be a permitted, not conditional use. So they have to just be waived for, you know, just they have to be, you know, approved. And, and not with any conditions.
So they're usurping local zoning, the state is. Is that?
Sounds like it.
Yeah, um, for the sake of, what's the name of this thing? Um, Housing Opportunities Made for Everyone, the Home Act. And then there's dwelling, uh, density standards.
You tell us what section you're talking about.
Um, I'm in section two now, and down to the dwelling unit density in areas served by municipal sewer and water that allow residential development. Bylaws shall establish lot and building dimensional standards that allow five or more dwelling units per acre for each allowed residential use. And density requirements for multi-unit families cannot be more restrictive than those required for single-family dwellings. That one's kind of loaded. And then there's one more, in municipal water sewer service areas that allow residential development, bylaws must permit a dwelling unit density bonus of 40% and a bonus of one habit, habitable floor above the height maximum. Really getting into the nitty-gritty of zoning. So, I mean, we don't know if this really applies to a town like Rutland. Um, don't the definition of that of the sewer and water, um, it amends the definition to define served by municipal water and sewer infrastructure to mean an area where connection is available to municipal water and direct or indirect wastewater systems. I don't know. I don't know why they would put that in there, um, for if, if if you had zoning, because in most cases, I don't, in most cases, if you have zoning, you would have, I don't know. I guess there are some towns that still don't have municipal water and sewer and have zoning. There are some smaller towns in Rutland County. So I, suffice it to say, um, and this is a note for Bill. Bill, um, keep the subdivision ordinance open. Um, and let's have the attorney take a look at Act 47. And, um, yeah, I mentioned that, you know, even like VLCT is not is saying, consult your town attorney. They're, there's, they're be doing, they're going to be doing trainings here in the next month or so for municipal officials, but they're still I'm not sure they'll be answering all the questions, even at those sessions. There's, um, one, there, there's a lot of money, you know, at the end of this act um, for different home programs around the state. So, you know, grants available there. There's this one I didn't read, and that's the Hotels and Housing Assistance. Um, this does not mention municipal water and sewer, but it says bylaws must not prevent or penalize hotels used to rent rooms with public funds for the purpose of providing, uh, Vermont General Housing Assistance. I think that's, I think that's the vouchers that we've we've heard a lot about. So that's 47. It's just a, just a lot of laughs. But, you know, um, I think one question for our attorney, is this something that we can address in our town plan when it does come up? Is this, do we want to take some of the themes here? Try to go with those? Okay? Any comments? Come on, Jerry.
It, it looks to me like somebody's got a lot of cleaning up to do, or not.
Oh, I know.
A lot of loose ends.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't remember seeing that language about districts covered by municipal water and sewer for, for any other statute.
So, so is the objective here to make it easier to develop more housing? Is that what?
That's the ultimate objective. Yeah, the, the, the in-between step is to, you know, loosen up your regulations so that can be possible. Right?
When is, what's the effective date?
Oh, well, that's, most of it started June or July 1st.
Oh, here it says right here, excuse me.
Except the parking requirements.
Effective September 1.
Affected July 1.
Well, some are so effective July 1, some September 1, some this is December 1, 2024.
So do they expect the towns to come up with the personnel to oversee this and, and point out where the the pitfalls are and the disconnects and?
Um, I don't, I don't remember the discussion in legislature and what they expected. Um, but the, the end result is that, yeah, I mean, we can't even get past interpreting what this is saying.
I think that question should be asked because towns are going to be doing budgets here soon, and and if there's a requirement that's not written down here and turns out to be a requirement, then select board needs to know that.
Yeah. They know this exists. Um, I'm not sure, um, what Bill, if he's going to some of the trainings or not.
But, you know, it's one thing to establish something for new development that's, that's maybe happening, but we're going to start messing around with all the existing that's out there, that's very good.
I, I guess.
How much this, you know, Act 250 is, over the years, has established different developments and, and so forth, and everything is in place, and now we're going to go in and try to change some of that?
Mm-hmm.
It'll be interesting.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure how it usually works with zoning. I mean, yes, new development, but I, if there's a change of ownership or change of use, I don't know if this then also applies in those situations. I don't know.
What about all the pre-existing multi-unit housing that already has four parking places? For two, for two families, or whatever the threshold is. Are there any exceptions?
It, it just goes back to whether they're grandfathered in or not. Which Howard just brought up.
Wonder what happens in neighborhoods like ours where you have covenants? That say you can't have multi, multi-family housing?
Something. Like there was something in the definition. Covenants and deed restrictions. This amends 27 VSA Section 545, covenants, conditions, and restrictions of substantial public interest. So it amends that to invalidate any deed restrictions or covenants established after July 1st of this year. It validates those if they establish minimum dwelling unit size or require more than one parking space per unit. But I saw something in there about that.
So that exempts people like, in, in your situation?
Can't.
It sounds like what Barbara just read exempts people with pre-existing covenants.
Yeah.
Or most of them.
Boy, that would seem like then you can't have HOAs or anything that, you know, in a like in a planned unit development, you can't.
Future, future HOAs will have to follow this.
Right.
Existing ones I assume are accepted, but I mean, the concept is appealing to increase availability of houses, lower the cost for, I talked to two brokers this week that are having a horrible time finding places where new couples coming to town that they can afford. This might help the situation. You know, so would high-rise condos theoretically, or high-rise apartment houses, high-rise, you know, multi-units, not 50 stories, but things we don't have.
I can't say I agree with the parking thing, though.
I'm sorry?
I can't say that I would agree with the parking. But I think it's unrealistic to, to even think of any dwelling unit having less than two spaces per unit in today's world.
I think you can have them, but you just can't require less than.
But I, I, I mean, a requirement of having less than two just seems
You just can't require.
Just seems, you know, just
Developers too, if they don't have to put two space in, they're not going to do it.
Right, but then where does it put the cars? I mean,
Right.
The real, the, the real world is, is going to be two cars at least per unit.
Yeah, so needless to say, this is kind of like causing, stirring up waves and such.
And, and where is this in terms of it being, uh, finalized?
Oh, it was signed by the governor and and on the date, but after, after the session ended, yeah.
Five units on less than an acre, two's a lot.
Barely gives you enough space to get the parking spaces in there. That'd be objective.
Okay, so we'll probably be hearing more about that, Act 47. Old business, um, this evening, um, we've got, so with the river quarters, I don't see us moving quickly on this. Um, because we've, uh, well, you know, we're waiting on some things from the select board already, uh, with short-term rentals and such. Um, and we might as well take our time with this, and we have, um, we're going to get some help. Um, out of the blue came an offer from an intern at the Nature Conservancy. Um, she also works part-time for UVM, um, on um, helping us with the outreach. And that some Nature Conservancy's other staff will be available as well, and, um, and we'll also have the floodplain manager, Kyle Madash. He's part of this group. And so they're working on some outreach for a town that has, for the town of Rutland, they might include Timoth, but, um, they're looking at what our circumstances are. And, um, and they're going to have a message, they're going to develop a message about the financial um, advantages of it, and then the natural resource advantages of it. And we'll have that, we're not, they're going to take until like the first of the year to do that. We're going to have a series of meetings for that, so, um, and they'll properly deliver that in person at that point. Um, but it'll, it, it should give us some ideas for doing our own outreach. What we have, um, I'm still waiting for a better map than that one that gives us a better idea where these, um, where these affected people will be. Uh, but the 42 has gone down to 35 because Marcia, you know, there was several instances where she said, there's no such address, and so it was like maybe a shed or something that came up.
Is that where that came from the Lister's office, that listing?
Yes, the one I sent out, yeah, Bill sent out.
Got some, yeah, that's, that's got some issues with it, that listing, I mean, that. Um, there's reasons why well, some of those had like a zero, a zero address, right?
Right.
And that, and that shouldn't have been, that, that, that shouldn't have showed a zero. What, what's happened is when we, when 911 came and we assigned numbers to the grand list, every, every parcel, it was great for the ones for homes and everything else where we had numbers, but then when we got to vacant land, just, just an open parcel of land, we said, what are we going to do? So we assigned it a number to start with. We assigned it just a round number, like to the nearest 100 or something. We, we tried that. That ended up getting us in a little trouble because somewhere along the way, somebody would use a number, it's all of a sudden, it's a vacant piece of land, they're going to build a house on it. They would start with the, you know, telephone and everybody else and start using the number that we had, which was not a 911 number. And we had to undo that, so I, I, I had Marcia go in and I said, take those numbers, any vacant piece of land, remove the number. We can't have a number in there. Well, she apparently put zeros in. So it came up with a, a zero, is what it looked like.
So the, the E911, um, addresses start here, start in a Lister's office? You give the state E911, that list?
Well, E911 was done by E91, 1997, E91, they drove all around town and they and they assigned the numbers as they did it automatically. But then from that point on, any new construction, the 911 coordinator, and I was there for a number of years, we, you know, measure and, and come up with a number, the proper number for it, but if it was a vacant lot, we really couldn't give it a number. But by giving it a number, sometimes those numbers got out and they got out, they got used by attorneys and recordings and everything, and, and so there shouldn't be any numbers in a vacant piece of land. If it's just a vacant piece of land, you need to have a driveway. You know, it needs to be like a driveway to a house or a building, something.
So, so, yeah, I mean, this came from, came from Marcia, but it, it I sent her a list from our layers, our 911 layers at the Regional Planning Commission. We looked at that map and all of the, you know, all of the structures there, you know, and pulled up that layer and came up with addresses that maybe weren't in her system.
And, and, and some of those where, where they said there's no such number as this.
Yeah.
Might have been one where a number was assigned and it shouldn't have been. It should have been, those should have been cleaned out, and apparently they weren't cleaned out, so. But anyways, that's, I, I, I saw the list and I
Yeah, so.
I, I, I gotta try to get my hands on an up-to-date listing of the grand list, and then I could have I could have done that, or at least I know what was going on.
Howard, what if it was a vacant piece of land at the time the 911 numbers were assessed and then developed, or somebody bought it and built something on it? It got a number.
Well, when they built something, I first, well, they, they gotta get, they gotta get a number assigned to it. I mean, that's the first thing.
But the number, if, if it, if the one on the south side of the vacant piece was 28 and the one on the north side was 30, then what kind of number does the one in the middle get?
Wherever the driveway, if you're going to talk about a dwelling or a building or something, wherever it is, it, it's, you measure to it, and it's assigned, it's, it's measured, it's, it's, uh, every 5.28 feet basically is where the numbers go up the street. And it's, uh,
Every what? 5.3 feet?
Every 5.28 feet is, is the way, if you start at the beginning of a street, every 5.28 feet would be, you know, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and that's the way emergency vehicles, when they get to turn and go up a street, on the odometer, as they, they can see, uh, it gives them indication of where, where they got to go, and that's, um, so it's all numbers. So some of those numbers there should, shouldn't have been, the zeros shouldn't, shouldn't have been there, but that's no big deal. But some, but to clean those up, I'll try to get my hands on a listing and, and fix.
Okay, okay.
Because you can't really use a 911 number for a vacant piece of land which does not have a 911 number. You could, we can assign it to the property owner, whoever owns it, but it wouldn't be a 911 number.
Is it safe now to just take those out? Just, just for planning purposes?
The problem is, is they're, they're in the wetland, I mean, they're in the river stream, and we don't want to take them out. We we need to keep them in there because they're they're in, in the system. You know, I've got to, I've got to be in the office tomorrow morning. I've got a meeting downstairs at 10:00, and I'll see if I can somebody.
Yeah, one of them's one's a zero, one she says is not in the system, our system.
Yeah, and that, and that's, I'd like to see what some of those are. I, I know what the zeros are, the zeros, they shouldn't have been, shouldn't have been any number at all, it shouldn't have been.
So there may still be 42. Um, I, there may be, maybe less than that. Uh, at my count, um, five of those are governments, so they're already covered by state permit. So, you know, they, they, whatever the town passes would not apply to them because they already have to meet, uh, what the state says they have to meet. And that's, and so that's similar to like, um, the hydraulic dams. They have federal government that they answer to. You take those away, I, we've got around, um, 16 that are offices, commercial or manufacturing, like Caris Reels. Um, and, you know, businesses like the Fortress of Fun, of Fun, and at Flori Plaza, and, you know, Gauet. So there's those, and I've got a message into Act 250's are most of those Are most of those covered by Act two-fifty? If so, they're, they don't, whatever is passed by the town doesn't apply to them either. They have to meet the Act two-fifty standard. So I sent the list of those addresses to the office here in Rutland, just asking whether they are part of Act two-fifty.
Commercial ones?
Yeah. Anybody have any ideas about?
Was it Act two-fifty in the seventies?
Early seventies?
Or things like Gauet probably wouldn't be covered by, Gauet's been there forever. Only something after that, right, maybe? Does that sound right?
Yes.
After that day. Sounds right. Probably isn't.
You certainly want an accurate list. We don't wanna miss anybody or any parcel or anything. It needs to be an accurate list.
Right.
Everything, you know. That's my concern. I'll see what I can get.
Okay, okay. So maybe sixteen of those commercial types that might be covered by Act two-fifty, maybe not. Thirteen residential parcels in here. So, you know, that's a big, that's nowhere, nowhere close to forty-two, so. And one museum, not quite sure.
The Rockwell Museum?
I think it's the Railroad Museum.
Oh, the railroad, oh, okay, okay, sure.
They call it, it's seventy-nine Depot Lane.
Yep, that's the railroad.
They call it the railroad station, but.
And the reason you said sixteen commercial, those are potentially ones that may be covered by Act two-fifty.
Yeah.
And if they are, they've got, they've got they're already, they already have things in place if they're covered by Act two-fifty.
Right, they have to follow what Act two-fifty did.
Set up for them back from the, yeah.
For, even, yeah, for floodplains and river corridors.
Well, sixteen of them may be covered under that anyway.
Yeah, yeah, it's Gauet. It's Joe and Becky Rizzi on twenty-four McKinley Avenue.
That's, yeah, that's the flower shop, right up the corner.
It's all the other corner.
Oh, okay, Mr. Twitters, yeah.
Mr. Twitter's one, yep, yep.
Okay. Railroad Station, the Fortress of Fun. The Floris are now in Troy, New York, it looks like. We got the mailing addresses here. A manufacturing facility at six-two-eight Business Route four, CFC RelLC. I mean, the headquarters, I guess, is in Proctor or the home base?
That's Caris Reels is what it is. Caris Reels headquarters in Proctor, but Caris Reels has a number of parcels here on both. And certainly they're, you're probably in it, Caris Reels. It's a railroad station, and Caris Reels is right there with it, maybe beside them. In fact, there's another building, another building out here that's, Caris Reels owns two buildings, they're two separate, they're two separate entities there now, but.
There's a commercial place at six-zero-five North, five-nine North Campbell Road, James Earl.
Yep, that's Earl's Trucking.
Oh, yeah, right.
That's what?
Earl's Trucking, Earl's Trucking on Campbell Road.
They're right on that.
How about this one in Texas, where the owner's in Texas?
Oh, that's a.
US Route seven north?
Yeah, what's the name? It's a, under what name?
It's under Holmes.
Yeah, Richard Holmes. Sure, that's a, that's right at the corner where you turn to go to McKinley. Going up Route seven, where you turn to go on McKinley. Mr. Twitter's on one side, and Holmes, it's the appliance place.
Oh, the, okay, the.
They used to be on the planning commission, right? Am I thinking the same?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, yes.
Okay, okay. And we've got GMCO Properties at eight-oh-five Business Route four.
Eighty-five, you said?
Eight-oh-five.
Eight-oh-five. That's, that's down, really, I think that's Gauet, eight-oh-five. No, 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 that's the wrong side.
This has Gauet at eleven-forty-seven.
Well, it could be Curious Plastics is, eight-oh-five is on the right-hand side going out, and I think that.
What's the name of it again?
GMCO Properties.
That could also be where the wood is, right? Where they cut wood.
Oh, yeah. It's, whatever, it's the same side as Gauet, because they're both odd numbers.
Okay, you said, okay, it is an odd number, so it puts it on a, yeah, it's one of those properties right along by Gauet. It's on, I think it's one of those properties.
Dan Carney's in there and.
Yeah.
That C and D chopper or whatever is in there. Now, that place, there's something that would be covered by Act two-fifty. That little building's been there forever, right?
Yeah.
I didn't see this before, we have one mobile home. I think just one. This one's on Route three.
That's Anne Marie Dickinson. And when the last flood we got, I had somebody go out and check on her. She was like on an island, she was fine, but, I mean, water was, she wasn't on an island quite yet, but water was around two-thirds of her, let's put it that way. She was, you know.
Maybe she might be a good spokesperson for like, don't put anything else in the river corridor.
With our sewer pump station there we got, we're on that list too.
Yeah. Yeah, I was wondering about that. Are you covered by the state permit?
We're meeting with, we're meeting with FEMA now. We had a meeting today, and we got another meeting tomorrow. We, you know, we had some issues, but that's a process, really. We didn't have any structural damage to the buildings. We had a propane tank that broke loose, floated away, so we lost all the propane, and, you know, like a three-hundred-and-fifty gallon tank. This has happened twice. It's happened during Irene flood, and then, and then this flood, and and as a result of that, what happened was, we pump our sewers to West Rutland. And so when everything came up, the sewer system was full, pumps, both pumps were running twenty-four hours a day. So we pumped West Rutland a whole lot of stuff. You know, normally, if we're pumping around twenty thousand gallons a day, within a, you know, day, a day and a half, we pumped over two-hundred thousand gallons. I mean, it was just constant pump.
River water. Right?
Yeah, it was, yeah, combination.
River water pumping to West Rutland.
Thank gosh for that, thank goodness for that arrangement with them. Another, we got Pradicos, US Route seven north.
Right at the corner of Lincoln Avenue.
Yeah.
There's a person that when we were talking last week, seems to me that could be very disappointed with this. He wants to build a, maybe he wants to build another shed for trucks, whatever. That he could be really disappointed that the land that he owns, he's now being told he can't use it because he's in that. That's, that was the example.
Yeah, it would be.
Maybe not, but I'm just saying, he's a prime example because they're in, they're in motion all the time there.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, these people don't have a lot of room to move, to add on.
I mean, you look at like Gauet, that is kind of what it is right now. It's kind of established, it's not really doing anything. But Pradicos just, that things always, 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 something's going on there. So that's, anyway, not that that matters.
And we got Caris Reels, Ripley Road, C and D chopper, Business Route four.
They would now be Act fifty covered, I guess.
Here's GMCO Properties again, an office building, and Business Route four. Daniel Hendy on.
Avenue.
Yeah.
But if you're gonna go to the state police or the motor vehicle place, he's right on the corner when you turn to go.
The auto or the auto mechanic place. Related Property LLC, nine-thirty-nine Business Route four.
That again is down on the strip down here. They got flooded, I mean, that road was shut down. Really shut down.
Does it start to pitch up there, like just as an example, is Dan Carney's lie, is he far enough and high enough that he didn't get?
Yeah, he was, he was, he was okay, I think at his building, he was okay. But where the eighteen, nineteen Green was?
Yeah.
That's where the water, that's where it really, building across the area, yeah.
In July.
Yeah, there's a lot of cleanup there, they sell trailers in here now and stuff.
So, and again, I mean, this wouldn't, wouldn't kick anybody out, it's just anything added. They need to, you know, remember the shadow or the infill, just no closer to the river than they are. A couple more commercial properties, GMCO Properties again, at eleven-oh-one Business Route four. They've got, they're here, one, two.
Yeah, and Gauet owns about four pieces down through there, they all along that strip on the left-hand side.
Is that what that means, Gauet Marvel Company?
Okay, okay. And, let's see, they have Green Mountain Power as commercial on US Route seven north. I'm not quite sure.
Well, that's right.
That's their headquarters.
Or the substation.
Yeah, well, is there?
Seven-forty-seven, Route seven north.
The generating station that, that, running on the left as you're going up.
The one out by itself?
Yeah, yeah.
No village right there.
That certainly is right in there.
Is that their headquarters?
I don't know why they.
As far as on the right-hand side of the road, yeah, that's where the TMC is.
Is this on the left-hand side, seven-forty-seven?
Yeah, yeah, the generating station is. Glen, Glen Station.
It's on the west side?
On the west side.
Now, why they call that commercial?
Well, yeah, it's a generating station, it's commercial.
Well, the other one, the other, I mean, the one here is a hydroelectric, hydroelectric facility. And, and the one, the one here and the one at one-hundred to Santa Drive, there's a hydroelectric facility there.
That's the, that's up by Glen Pond. Right, and that's the, that's the, that's the substation up by Glen Pond, maybe, right? Or the generating facility there with a.
No, no, you said Chisana.
Chisana.
Chisana, no, that's up, you go Post Road, you go by the school, Chisana goes to the left.
Yeah.
And you should go way out, that's where you get, that's where you get to the Penn Stock that comes down through. And they don't, I'm not sure what, just exactly what parts, they own a little piece of, they own a little triangular piece of land with absolutely nothing on it. What's that number again?
It's one-hundred to Santa.
Okay, you know what that is? That's a piece of, piece of land with nothing on it, and it shouldn't even have a number. I mean, it's, it's a little.
That's when you guys assigned a number, just because you raised that.
We gave them numbers and, and those should have been taken off, they should have been.
So that's Hydro, the one here's Hydro, but the one, I forget the name of it, Glen? Glen?
Glen Station?
It could be.
It's commercial.
Is that on the same side as Twitter's? Mr. Twitter's? Maybe they own a piece of land there, Howard, do they? Like, everybody swims, that maybe isn't actually developed.
No, Twitter's is an even number.
Okay, so that's.
But that's McKinley Avenue.
That's on McKinley. But the, yeah, Glen Hydro is.
The appliance store is an odd number on Route seven north.
It would be. It would be. The driveway comes on the Route seven, and they're on the.
See, you're saying all the other hydro plants are utility.
Right.
So why would that one either not?
That's because of what, the Lister's office is just a, a mix-up, that name should be changed, it should all be the same.
Okay, that should be Hydro too, so it's, okay.
Which one should be Hydro?
The seven-forty-seven US Route seven. Green Mountain Power.
The biggest Hydro, I mean, that's a, that's not a major one.
It is a big one.
And then there's one other commercial one. It's Paul and Ingrid Gallow, but it's on US Route seven north, three-seventy-nine.
That's next to the appliance store.
Yeah.
You know, it's an apartment complex, right next to the appliance store we're talking about. Just McKinley Avenue, you just come up this way, a couple of, two or three lots and that's.
Just to the, just to the left of, if you're looking at the appliance store, it's just to the south and left.
Why do they call it commercial?
It's apartments, and he has a, he has a commercial space in there for his offices and stuff.
Okay.
I don't think he's used it for that, but that's what it was.
That's apartment.
Designed to do.
And offices.
Not all that visible from the road, is it?
Yeah, it is right.
Right on the road.
Kind of purple, I think now, I think they painted it purple, I think, like.
I got the impression he had a lot of storage in there, just, just a place to leave stuff.
And they must pull and go behind the building, right? This is nothing, there's no room out front to.
There's parkings all to the left.
Oh.
There's a little, there's a little house down in back of them.
Yeah.
There's a sign there that says Clean Phil Wanted. Now, they must be on that list because they're right in the river.
They gotta be there, literally.
They gotta be.
So that would be sort of near three-seventy-nine?
If not, that's, that's, somebody missed that one.
Oh, absolutely.
Well, Irene, that place got pounded.
They're right on the river.
There's four-thirty-one US Route seven north, Jeff Burke and Tammy Conkleton. So we might be able to take off some of these, these offices and commercial manufacturing when we hear back from Act two-fifty. They already can take off five for government. The museum. I don't know where that falls. So we've got thirteen residential ones, and they're all over town. It's really weird. You know, up north, northeast Silver Birch Place.
That's the condos.
There's a multifamily dwelling on Old Falls Road. There's a single-family dwelling on Cold River Road here. McKinley Avenue. The US Route seven one we just talked about. Cold River Road, another one. The Cold River Road, another McKinley Avenue. Well, I guess those are kind of congregated.
I would get flagged those. We had flagged something on the grand list when I was working over there to do with. Or maybe it was Muzzy Brooker or something, we flagged, maybe it wasn't, wasn't this year, I guess.
And then East Pittsford Road, there's a single-family dwelling. And Amanda Drive, which is Colonial Estates?
Yeah, where's Amanda Drive? That doesn't sound familiar.
Up by Colonial Estates, you know where that is? It's a road that drops down and it basically ends up down behind Glen Pond, from the river down by Glen Pond from the other side, right? Howard, I mean, I probably don't say it in that perfect. You go down a pretty darn steep.
Yeah, it was a.
Should have never been.
Before they developed, before that developed, remember they came in, I don't know if you were here, Andy, yeah?
Yeah, I was there.
And there was a number of issues. Number one, the grade of the hill was too steep. And then there was some question we were hearing that there was maybe a bunch of stumps and debris that were buried on that hill, there were those, a lot of concerns. And so what, what the planning commission did was, they put a restriction on, on that development that it, that it wouldn't be a town road because it wouldn't qualify as a town road. And they started selling these lots. These people came into the select board and fought it, and the select board turned it all around and made it into a town road after we had done what we did in the planning commission. Yeah, there's no, that was, that was bad.
That was, that was a long time ago.
It was. I mean, but we must through all the pains to protect that place by putting, it's in the deeds.
Remember they came in, the fire department didn't want to go down there because of the. Remember they came in, the fire department didn't want to go down there because of the steepness and weakness, yeah.
It was about a ten percent grade, I remember. As we went up there and measured the grade.
Yeah.
Couple of spots.
And the select board.
And then it goes down and then turns. But the select board overrode us after we had established that, got it all worked up and it was.
And got them to agree.
People were building houses down there and they and they came in and. And got to the select board and the select board caved in and. Said, okay, it's a town road. I mean, I don't want to buy a school bus, Jim, going down that road.
I I don't remember it.
One of those houses is off. On the. East side of the road and it's low, it's close to the river.
It's really close to the river. You're on the other side.
Probably the one that they're talking about.
They're right near the river. Must have been pretty wild in that area. Plus.
Yeah. So, you know. Some of these people might, some might. Not really. You know, fight this. Um. Because they're so close. I mean, I mean, like that one, there's not much, they can't really go much closer to the river.
Can't put anything any closer. You can't put this.
Right, that's the key. So. So um, I'll I'll break these out a little bit, a little bit prettier. After you go through the grand list and. We'll just. Talk about what should be on here or not and then, you know, we'll just continue to take a look at where these are and. What, um, what. You know, our. Argument should be or what we expect their arguments to be on this. Provided we want to go ahead.
It's going to be hard to be consistent.
How's that?
Well, each one is going to be located at a different distance from the waterway. And um. Uh, each one is going to have a unique set of circumstances. As to why they shouldn't be impacted. Um.
It's kind of like, you know, the flood hazard area now, you know, that's that varies. You know, and width and that kind of stuff, so. It's not a totally foreign concept. That.
Well, it tightens it.
You know, it's. There may be more sensitivity to it also, given. The flooding and the.
Right.
Problems we've had with the rain.
Right.
We're going to almost have to have pictures of each place. And how, and maybe we can get some aerials, which will show us better.
Google. Google it.
Mm-hmm.
So we can, we can visualize it.
Mm-hmm.
He can, but that's, you know, he's been on, one of them, he's lived it.
And to your point, Sherman, I would think the businesses would be like. Yeah, I mean, we don't want to get any closer. Um, they might be more amenable, given. The frequency of flooding now. Some of them, I mean, some of them we've looked at tonight, they're established, you know, they're not going to get much bigger and.
I don't think it's necessarily, if you. If they, it would be an intention or even thinking about it, but it just, to me, it's that headset that. I'm being told now that I own this piece of property and maybe I was going to put something out there and sure it floods there, but now I'm being told you can't. I I I think that's the. That's going to be the headset. There's going to be people that are going to be strong-willed about that. I.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't blame them, but you know, hopefully they see the logic.
In some cases, whether they had plans for it or not, it's like.
Right. Right, I don't, that's, that's right.
Yeah. Okay, we'll just keep nodling away at this. Any other comments? Um, down to announcements. Anybody have any announcements? Ocurtina. Just keeps. Unresolving itself, although there's, there's a, there's a team to negotiate with them. What happened is that. The agreement where the the town was getting um, money from the the owners. To pay for extra law enforcement, that went with the owners and the owners changed. It didn't go with the property, the agreement. So. Um, they're having, the select board's having to start over again. The the agreement with Cortina, you know, essentially ended when the property sold. Because it didn't go with the property. It just went with the previous owners' names.
It's selling, selling assets, but not liabilities is is sort of the way it spreads out.
I guess.
The property. Essentially almost stayed in the family, in a sense.
Yeah.
It didn't go very far, but. But the sale wiped out the.
I was at one select board meeting where the old owner said he'd just met the new owner.
What?
He had just met him.
The paper said that. It was a sloan. What I thought.
Not a son.
Star close.
Connection there, well.
Absolutely.
There was.
There was some connection.
There was some, I think there was some talk that he was a, it was a son-in-law.
Yeah, it was a.
Pretty close family. I thought his daughter was associated with the new organization, which would mean something.
He told the select board, I'm just, I just met this guy.
He just never really knew her that well.
So, yeah, so um, Matt Geddy and Mary Ashcroft are on the team negotiating a new agreement there. Um. But I think it's mostly about what the renumer, what the money is that's going to the town is going to be as opposed to. They can't do much of what the state schedule is for keeping people there and.
It's probably a combination, so what the, what the new owners are going to do to minimize whatever.
Yes, that's true too. They they did, they have put up a fence. Between them and the Hampton Inn. And uh, it's a fence with the, you know, the the plastic screen. So you can't see through it. Um. Yeah. There may be some other things, if that's right. Okay.
Not as bad off as New York City though.
Yes. Or California, Southern California, oh, hi. Okay, the minutes from September fourteenth, um. You know. One, two. Three, four, five, six of us. Six of the seven, so. We should be good to go here.
I move that we accept the minutes.
Thank you, Sherman.
I'll say.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Okay. Next meeting would be the twenty-six. Just keep going through this list. Getting it, getting polished up. Anything else?
Motion me. Close up.
Give a second.
I can.
Okay, you're adjourned.